For you. Good.
If you have the, um, presentation up, you can just plug in. Do you have an HDMI?
I think I do, yeah.
Thank you for.
Oh, it's taking some time, right?
Should be short.
Oh, it's not letting me do it because I'm not online. What is your, how can I do it without?
Oh, like without the Wi-Fi?
Yeah.
Um, if you pull up the.
Oh, okay.
Okay, perfect. And then you'll just plug it in there and then we'll be able to present that way.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody out to the Roy City Council, City Council meeting for April 1st. Time is now, April 1st, 2025, time is now 5:30. I want to recognize that we have Councilmember Saxton, Councilmember Scadden, Councilmember Paul, Councilmember Wilson, and Councilmember Jackson with us tonight. We've asked Councilmember Wilson if she would go ahead and lead us in a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Diane?
Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you'll please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Diane. Council, we have a consent item, specifically the February 2025 financial statements. Any comments, questions about those documents?
I had a quick question. Usually Amber's here to ask, but I don't know. I'll ask one of you guys then. I was just wondering on the miscellaneous revenue, could you just say generally what that entails? It looks like we're over 100% and I was just wondering what kinds of things would be bringing us up already ahead.
Yeah, so those are kind of some of the budget items that don't fall in any category. But like, for example, the revenue we have from the cell tower is a miscellaneous revenue. Surplus vehicles that we sell, the surplus property we sell. So I think that that's why it is the budget because sometimes we don't exactly know what the cost of those things that we sell is going to be, so.
And then the park development, that's quite an exciting number. So is that just in relationship to maybe some building projects that have been recently and?
Correct, yep.
Okay, alright, great.
And there's, there is, and I can't remember because I'm not as smart as Matt who usually sits here, but there is some things that are going to be spent that just haven't been spent yet this year. That's why it's over the budget amount.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody have any other questions, comments about the consent titles? Seeing or hearing none, then do I have a motion then to approve the consent titles?
So moved.
Thanks Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Anne. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, consent items are approved. Uh, we're in the public comment period. This is an opportunity to come up to the mic, give us your name and your address, and talk about anything you want to talk about. You got four minutes. Anybody like to share a thought? Okay, name and address.
Hello, my name's Steve Thomas. My address is 3642 West, 4800 South. I'm here to follow up on my comments and suggestions made at the previous city council regarding the wasteful spending of tax dollars with the Roy City Public Works Department. I've done a bit more research and I found that Ogden City Public Works spent a mere $104 on training. Ogden City also services approximately 95,000 residents versus Roy's approximately 40,000 residents. But I'd like to reiterate that Roy City Public Works spent over $50,000 during the same time period. Why is that necessary? I even called and confirmed with Ogden City regarding their spending and it was confirmed to be an accurate expenditure. I was also told that they never send out their employees to such costly training because it isn't necessary when training is offered here locally and at no cost. Again, how can that be? $104 versus over 50K, $50,000. That's just insane. It seems irresponsible that this is even being allowed, borderline negligent. In fact, another trip just barely took place, sending employees to an asphalt training halfway across the country. And we have two asphalt companies located locally, literally just straight up the road. Wasteful. But onto my second topic that I'd like to move forward to tonight. The work hours our water department and public works keep and the prob- uh, and the, uh, and how it affects our citizens. I myself, having worked for the city's water department until recently and knowing how much work takes place on a four-hour Friday, which is zero, I decided to look at other cities across the state. And I have found that Roy City, if it isn't, this is the only city that works a four-hour Friday. There's no other city that does it. And how much, how much can get done in four hours? When the sun doesn't even come up, most of the months here in Utah until eight o'clock in the morning. So we're literally paying people 10 hours a week to watch the sun come up. We can't put them out because it's not safe. Oh, I'm sorry, I got off the thing. And then the other issue with this schedule presents is that if a citizen relocates to our city and gets around to calling to have their services turned on at 10:00 AM on a Friday morning, they are charged after-hour fees. Why? Why aren't our, why aren't our water department and our public works working in eight to five, Monday through Friday? To maximize the workday for its citizens, seems like another fantastic opportunity to improve the use of taxpayer dollars and eliminate the unnecessary fees for our citizens. Over the last two meetings, I feel that I have brought to light habitual problems that exist with the water, or with the public works department, their spending habits and their work habits. And this is a rising concern to me as a citizen and I have presented great solutions as well. And I would like to know what will be done to correct these habits going forward to benefit me, myself, and every other taxpayer in Roy because we, the bottom line is, we're paying their wages and they work for us. And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else like to share a thought? Any topic? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and come out of our public comment period. Thank you for the input. Uh, we do have two presentations we're going to talk about tonight. Uh, we're going to start with the Ogden Regional Award for A-Shift Crew. Chief, I believe you're going to lead us off in this conversation. Please.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, so I'm privileged to get up here and speak in behalf of the great men and women who go out every day, respond to calls. And we had a call not too long ago where, um, our, our individuals, our, our employees performed exceptionally well. Um, I found out about a little bit later of the call. I was actually contacted by Ogden Re- Art Medical Director, Dr. Groh, about the exceptional job contacted by another liaison, Chad Wilson, and then later contacted by Jeff Como about the exceptional job that our, uh, our crew did on a certain call. And so right now I'm going to turn the time over to Chief Hally to kind of go over what was in the call, what they did. Um, and then we'll turn time over to Ogden Regional for the award and allow them to speak. But before we do that, I wanted to have the individuals come up. I think it's important we recognize them now as Chief Hally goes over the call so you can see and kind of get a feeling for what they did. So if I can have Tyler Sharp, Hayden, I think you guys are all here, right? Hayden, come up. Barclay and Morgan, if you guys could come up and stand in front of the council, please. Wherever you come from, come over here. You guys are great, by the way. Thank you.
This, this is C-Shift, by the way, not A-Shift, so. Yeah, gotta throw that out there, sorry. Uh, okay, so Chief asked me to give a little synopsis on this call. Um, so, yeah, here it is. Uh, on March 4th at 12:58 hours, ambulance 31 and medic 31 were dispatched with heavy rescue 41, ladder four, and battalion chief one on a motorcycle accident on Airport Road in Ogden. En route, the units were told to stage so PD could secure the scene. Upon arrival, the scene was secured by PD, so our units went in. They found a male patient lying on the ground with multiple injuries. A bystander on scene was holding open the patient's airway. Our crews initiated care and started working on the patient. An attempt was made to innobate the patient. There was no, there was too much blood coming from his mouth. In fact, so much blood that our portable suction unit could not keep up with the volume. The decision was made to perform an on-scene surgical cricoid thyrootomy, which is an incision, in the cricoid membrane in the front of the neck and inserting a breathing tube into the trachea of the patient to secure a patent airway. The procedure was successful and the airway was secured. The patient then went into cardiac arrest and CPR was started and was continued by applying our Lucas device. En route to the hospital, the patient's wounds were cared for, an IO was established, bilateral needle decompressions to the chest were performed, and epinephrine was administered. The patient was transported to Ogden Regional Medical Center where doctors and nursing staff took over the patient's care.
Thanks, Chief. You can go stand by them. One, one, one challenge that you would consider is when, when you're performing a cryotomy is it's a very, um, difficult. We train a lot on it, but it doesn't happen in your career a lot. For instance, I was a medic for several years and never got the opportunity. So we had a medic that just graduated school, Barclay, it was his first day on the truck. So to do this and, and Hayden, how many years you have as a medic? So you're talking about relatively young paramedics who performed a procedure and really executed it perfectly. And that's exceptional training, exceptional job, speaks to the people, uh, to the firefighters, so they did an outstanding job. And so at this point, I'll turn the time over to Ogden Regional. Jeff, if you want to come up and introduce, um, your Ogden Regional staff and who they are?
Alright, where you going? Thanks, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this was a, a unique call. So we, we have a new CEO. Before I get into that, so I just want to introduce Mike Kelly. He's our CFO at Ogden Regional. This is Cassie. She's our ED Director up at the hospital. Um, we have a new CEO at Ogden Regional, Jerry Gonzalez. He came from, I think, believe he came from Texas, right? Oh, he came from California, out of California. Sorry, I don't want to mess that up. Anyway, um, when, when he got here, uh, one of the ideas he had is he wanted to come up with a way we could recognize our, our responders for excellent work. One of the things they did where he came from is they recognized the station of the month for exceptional care that was kind of voted on by the ED staff and our physician staff on some great work that we're seeing in the field. So he wanted to find a way that we could recognize that. With that being said, this is our very first one. So we've never done an award like this before, so we're excited to be here at Roy and offer this award um, and recognize Roy City for their excellent, excellent work they, that they provide every day. So I just got a little speech here, I'll kind of cover, and then we'll, we'll kind of recognize them and give them, we have a plaque for them that we like to, like to recognize them with. So again, Mayor and Council, thank you for letting us be here on behalf of Ogden Regional Medical Center. Uh, we're honored to recognize Roy City Fire Department, C-Shift.
Sorry.
C-Shift, right? C-Shift, just kidding. For their outstanding excellence in trauma care on March 4th, 2025. Notably, paramedic Barclay Beveridge, paramedic Hayden Phillips, paramedic Morgan Nelson, and paramedic Taylor Sharp. Their swift response, decisive action and decision-making in a highly challenging situation were recognized by our emergency department and our emergency physician on duty that day, which is Dr. Stratford. We already commented on Dr. Groh, which is the county-wide medical director, uh, recognized this a- as well. So we're excited for that. Their ability to operate efficiently under great pressure, provide rapid patient care, and coordinate seamlessly with Ogden Regional Medical Center has not gone unnoticed. In recognition of their dedication and expertise, Ogden Regional Medical Center would like to name Roy City Fire Department Station 31 as the station of the month for March 2025. A well-deserved honor that highlights their commitment to excellence in treating patients in our community. This recognition is a testament to the skill, professionalism, and teamwork of the Roy City Fire Department. Again, congratulations to the, to our Roy City colleagues and thank you for your continued service and dedication to our community. We greatly value the relationships in healthcare between Roy City Fire and Ogden Regional Medical Center. So with that said, we have a plaque that we'd like to give for them. It basically reads here, uh, HA Healthcare Mountain Division, Ogden Regional Medical Center recognizes Roy Fire and Rescue for excellent in trauma care rendered on the 4th of March, 2025. C-Shift, and then it lists the paramedics' names again. Barclay Beveridge, Hayden Phillips, Morgan Nelson, and Tyler Sharp. Ogden Regional Medical Center. So we like to present that, so.
If you'd like to come up and take pictures, please come up. I see some cameras. Please come up. Take a great picture. Hey Jeff, how about pulling everybody together so they all can get a great picture? Do you mind? That's perfect. We'd like to shake your hands if we can, okay? If you don't mind, could you just walk right here, please?
Let me tell you, that takes a lot of judgment and courage and I'm happy to say that was phenomenal. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you, Jeff. Chief, you want to, any closing comments?
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm extremely proud of them. I'm extremely proud that a relationship like Jeff talked about, we have such great relationships that they're willing, they take the time, come down here. Um, we were trying to do this last council meeting, but there's too much on the agenda. So I just appreciate them recognizing the good men and women who are out there on the front lines doing an exceptional job. And a lot of our crews do this day in and day out. This is just an exceptional job and just grateful that we could honor them here today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions?
No, just very impressive. And like Diane says, coming from a doctor, I can't even imagine the pressure, somebody only being on the job that long and doing that. It's just very impressive and great training and great chief.
What was the name of the device? Because this is the second time I've heard, um, that they used it. Isn't it the one that does the automated CPR or?
Lu- the Lucas device. Yeah, that, that performs the CPR hands-free, yeah.
Yeah, no, as I say, because, yeah, that, this is the second one of these types of stories that I've heard that that device has been used and.
Yeah, yeah, they're put on every cardiac arrest where they're, where they're needed. So, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Ogden Regional. We really appreciate you going out of your way. Um, yes, thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff team. I appreciate you doing that. Um, certainly there's a collaboration that exists here. Um, it's, it's kind of one of those things, Chief, if I could be blunt. We recognize you're out there. We appreciate all you do, but we hope you don't find us. It's just one of those things that, as long as we know you're there, you're a safety net for all of us, but we hope you don't find us. But when you do, you certainly step up to the cause and you make a difference in the lives of so many people. And I think when you look at it from that perspective, what you do is invaluable. It's invaluable. Now, I can honestly tell you, um, it's not an easy job you have, okay? But don't ever think that we don't appreciate it because we certainly do. And speaking for 38,000 people in this city, and you, you touch more than just the residents of Roy. You touch a lot more. We do appreciate all you do. So thank you. Thank you very much. Well done. Okay, Beth, I think you're going to bring us presentation number two. This is trustee Beth Holbrook, okay? She's up here to kind of give us a prospective UTA um, and what, what all the great things are happening in Northern Utah. So, um, trustee, please share your thoughts with us. And I believe there's some charts that you're going to show us.
Yes, that's correct. Um, thank you so much. I don't think I could top that, but, um, I will give you a little bus perspective and rail perspective. For the record, my name is Beth Holbrook and I'm the trustee who represents Davis Weaver in Box Elder County. So I'm here this evening to, um, sorry, just one second. Lot of security on my system. So, this will take me just a second, but what I'm going to talk about really quickly is, as we all know. But what I'm going to talk about really quickly is, as we all know, given I also had to, you know, our operators have to navigate the current situation in terms of construction, obviously, but a bit challenging. I came up here to talk this evening about the five-year service plan that we have getting going. This is our first opportunity to do this and it's really going to be what we think, more of what we are going to see moving forward. Service is something that we have to prepare and plan for and budget for. We have to plan with the operators. We have to hire and train them and we have to get them familiar with the routes. Typically, that takes, in bus world, that's about six months to a year, given depending upon what the situation is. And a lot of times we do this, I was just kind of giving you some filler while I tried to get my presentation back up. So, but the reason that we do this is we want to start really understanding how our communities are connecting in today's world. We know that there's a lot of connectivity in terms of there's housing, there's some other, you know, we certainly have challenges in our communities, but we also have opportunities into how we are going to continue to evolve as we move forward in our growth, in our growth world that we're in today. And so I'm here tonight to talk about the five-year service plan. The first two years are pretty much ready to go and funded. And so this is the good news. After two years, we're going to go in and review, make sure everything is working the way that we anticipated, because some of our analysis is what you call a little bit of the magic of analyzing who's going to utilize the transit. So let me see if I can. Okay, we're not moving. Let's do that instead. Okay, so our change years now, we used to do two change years, technically three every year, but now we're really only focusing on one. So every April, there will be some service changes that you, within our entire service area, will feel. The biggest one this year, again, there's a lot of construction. There's some other challenges. So this really is a relatively minor scenario. As you can see, this is the modified route for 470. And this is going to really mostly impact Layton City near Antelope Drive, et cetera, some of the increased commercial in that area as well. And it's also going to allow a shift from the Layton Trolley. So basically, Layton City wanted to revamp what they were doing with that trolley. And just for context, they pay for that. And so what we have done instead is we've done some Western service, so the Western portion. So, but 2026 is really going to be the year of Weaver County. And there's going to be a lot of changes and scenarios. There's going to be more connectivity to Front Runner and there's going to be more connectivity to, within our service areas as well. And I apologize, the maps are not the best to read, but I'll try to give you some context. So the Route 455 is basically one of these big, large north-south routes. It originates near the Weaver State Campus and is on the eastern side of Weaver and Davis Counties. And that is a connectivity route that goes north and south all day long. And that's going to experience some modifications. There's some things being done in that area in Ogden. And as you know, the D Event Center is what we are starting to use as a mobility hub. So we obviously have our OGX, which is our term for the Bus Rapid Transit or BRT that you see that goes from the Front Runner system in Ogden all the way through to Weaver State and McKD. Some of the other things that we're going to be doing are the Ogden Trolley is no longer going to be utilized in 2026 as well. Again, that's a service that Ogden paid for and OGX has really just taken all the ridership out of that. So we wanted to better utilize this. And so that one is going to have a modification to it and it will no longer be a trolley. Side note, in the manufacturing world, there's only actually two bus manufacturers in the country right now. So it's very difficult to get vehicles that don't fit the standards as we know them today, which is the 40-foot bus. And by the way, please feel free to ask me any questions at any time when you're thinking about it, so that I can help you if there's any clarifications. The 604 is going to go to the D Event Center. Unless you think that this is all about Ogden, it is not. It does get to everywhere else while we're looking as well. And then the eastern side of Weaver State's campus. The 610 is going to be a new bidirectional. That'll be on 12th Street, 89 Harrison Boulevard. Again, that northern piece of Weaver County. The 612 is the North Ogden Loop. And what that's going to do is it's going to basically connect to that Pleasant View Station. For context, we are no longer able to offer service at Pleasant View. We had a shared rail structure with Union Pacific and they had a lot of freight needs and they superseded our transit needs. And so we're in the process actually of buying Corridor to continue to expand Front Runner moving forward north. And we actually have land at BDO, again, the Pleasant View Station, Willard and Brigham City. And that's going to be in the 2040, 2050 timeline, just to give you context. But we do anticipate that that's going to be all dedicated lane as what we have further south, so.
So what's the farthest north you go now then?
Ogden City itself, Union Station, on Front Runner. Most of this actual changes are going to be service. And for context, if I don't mention any routes, they're just going to exist as they are today. So this is just changes. I had someone ask me, and I probably should have clarified this at the beginning, this isn't just now new service, this is expanded service. So everything else that's not mentioned is staying in existence. And one of the other things that we're going to also be starting to look at is the Ogden Regional Medical Center. And there's connectivity needs in that area as well. And we're trying to make sure that we're maximizing a lot of this, of this more regional perspective in the cities. Obviously, Ogden being the largest city in Weaver County is one of those elements, but also there's other components to that as well. And we know that West Side has a lot of growth in all of the cities. And then the 625 is going to become a discontinued and replaced with the higher frequency Route 610. And that frequency is going to become another thing that we're going to be talking about. And I'll talk about that more for Roy in just a moment. The 630 is going to be improved frequency to every 30 minutes. And that is going to be up to Brigham City. And it's going to connect to, we're going to start establishing some IMZs. And IMZs, for context, we love our acronyms, is an innovative mobility zone. And think of this in context as, I don't know if you've heard of our service on demand, but that's basically an app-based product that we have established. We have one in South Davis right now, Southwest Salt Lake County, Salt Lake City. And then next year, or early this year, there'll be Provo. And then there'll be Brigham City and North Ogden, Pleasant View and Far West. And basically, for context, it's just a app-based program. You can utilize it at any time. It's geo-fenced, so you can just use it within those areas. And it's really designed to be hyper-local. So for instance, if you live in, I'll just use, if you live in North Ogden, you can't come to Roy City. But what you can do is go to your Walmart, your grocery store, your doctor's office. And they are very similar to Uber. They'll have some vehicles that are ADA compliant for anybody who has mobility needs, specific to like either a wheelchair or some type of a walker device. And they are, they usually come within 15 minutes. It's just a flat $2.50, just like you're getting on the bus. Again, it's going to be something that you will see coming into these areas as well. And these are what we would call these more like transit-connected, but not mainline service. They'll have some bus routes, but really this IMZ zone is designed to really understand the needs of those communities and to help serve them in this way. And the 645 is going to become modified with increased weekday frequency. That is going to go up to, sorry, the Roy Station, Riverdale Road and 40th Street. So this is going to be a vast improvement on the frequency side. And for context, frequency is one of the biggest drivers for utilization of transit. And I know I can say this because I know everyone's probably heard this phrase, but you know, I saw that bus and it was empty. It might seem as though, that doesn't seem the most efficient way to navigate. But what it really is doing is it's connecting along that entire route. And although you might see it and it only has one passenger or two, it's that frequency and that connectivity piece that's really enhancing where everyone lives. Again, it's this more regional perspective. And so I think this is going to be an excellent addition to Roy City as well as to some of the areas in the West Side as well. And including Riverdale, which is of course having, obviously, they have construction near the America Force Building and all of those other components that they're having to deal with. But as all of that construction dies down, these connectivities are really going to be, you know, really valuable moving forward. It is also going to, like I said, it's going to have that modification. Whoops, now I got too far ahead of myself. This is because my eyeballs don't work that far away. So this modification is basically getting rid of some redundant service, but it's going to, again, get to the WS, the Weaver State University Campus and Roy's Front Runner Station. And just as a side note for Front Runner, I'm just going to give you an update. So Front Runner has a project that we are calling our Strategic Double Tracking or Front Runner 2X. And basically what this is, is this is a program, a capital improvement that we're really trying to get accomplished prior to the Olympics. What this will do for all of the communities that have a Front Runner Station stop is it will increase frequencies. Right now, today, we only have about 25% of our track is double-tracked, which means that aside from a station, our trains can't pass each other. So that means that if one's ahead, they have to wait. And what this will do is it will increase our frequency to 15-minute service on peak hours. So think about those morning hours when people are trying to get somewhere else. And then same for the afternoon as well. So that's 15-minute service. Right now, today, it's 30 and then 60 minutes off-peak. And then what it will do is it will create 15-minute on-peak and 30-minute off-peak. It will also have Sunday service. These are the three things that we get asked about the most. And we anticipate that this project will be done roughly in the 2030 timeline, so prior to the Olympics, which obviously allows us to procure extra vehicles as well as to make sure that we're having that schedule established.
So we can count on construction along there, our front runner.
You guys have never seen construction. I don't know what you're talking about.
So obviously, they'll keep the one going while they're working on the other side or whatever, but.
That's correct and very observant. And that is, that is exactly what we intend to do. A lot of this is really just building out that second track. And what this is going to accomplish, and this is throughout our system, from Ogden to Provo, it's going to basically build us so that we have 50% double-track. So in addition to the stations, now all of these trains can pass. And what this is also going to do is it's going to create an opportunity then to not only just procure more vehicles to do this, but to figure out strategies to, again, increase that service on the connectivity side. So at the station, right? Because it's really great if you can go every 15 minutes on-peak, but if you're not getting anywhere outside of that station, then we're missing the boat. And so we want to make sure we're doing that as well. So, but great question. And yes, sorry, most of it will be in Union Pacific's right-of-way, but not all of it, so. Yeah. This is the 630. And again, this is going to be more increased service to the northern portion of Weaver County. Sorry, went too fast again. I went the wrong way. Where did I go? There we go. Okay, 630 already did, 645. Okay, this is another IMZ or Innovative Mobility Zone. I always have to stutter when I say that. Again, you can see the cities that it's going to provide access to. And again, it's a hyper-local thing that can be done if anybody has a desire to go somewhere within these areas. You can utilize it. It's an app-based program, probably, and we haven't fully defined this yet, but it'll probably be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That's what South Davis is. And Monday through Friday is obviously the peak connectivity pieces, but there also is some Saturday and Sunday service as well. Next one is Route 604. It's shortened to the Roy Station and replaced by the extended Route 626. And that is a more Western route. And for context, I should have explained this as well. The pink is Front Runner. The blue is the new route. And the frequency increase, again, incredibly valuable. And this is us getting ready for when we have a double-tracking. And the BDO piece that I already spoke to you about, the 613 is going to increase that access and again hit Pleasant View. The F 618, and for context, an F is a flex route. It's going to be discontinued. Basically, a flex route is like slightly different. It's just, you can just go off route just a little bit, just like by a mile. But we have found that that has not been, because we can't do frequency on it as well, because it does deviate. It's not as efficient as creating more frequency on other direct lines. And then, see, look at all this Weaver County. Again, the F 20, again, that flex route's going to be discontinued and then the 604 is going to pick up that service. And then in 2028, just as a context, this is really about the 470 and the 455. So right now, the 470, 455 go from Ogden all the way to Salt Lake. And then the 455 goes all the way to the University of Utah Research Park. We're going to create Farmington Station as a mobility hub and have another BRT from there to the university. So the 455 and the 470 are going to become more of these local routes. So you're going to see more service in that area as well. And let's see, I think I have a couple more. I thank you for indulging me. I know some of this is a lot of data and it's not for a couple of years, but I do think it's going to add a lot of value. The 600 is going to be part of the 470. And this route is kind of like, just again, based on the Salt Lake Davis County BRT or Davis-Salt Lake, depending upon which side of the county you're on, which is, means we need to find a name. The 609 is the 30-minute service to the D Event Center. And the 455 is going to be discontinued south of Farmington Station. And some other routes as well that are going to be some modifications. We call them discontinued, but they're not discontinued. They just will not go south of Farmington Station. And that is my contact information. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask them now or reach out to me later and I'm happy to give you more information. I know I gave you a lot and I really appreciate your time and attention and thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for trustee Holbrook?
Yes, thank you for your presentation and thanks for letting us take a look at it beforehand. I thought that was very nice, so appreciate that. So one of the questions I had is, on this cool value of UTA handout that you had, I was just wondering, it talked about some of the savings. It talks about every $1 invested in UTA generates $5.11 in economic returns. And I was just wondering, how do they figure that and what does that include and entail?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we really wanted to understand what the value is because we look at ourselves in a lot of ways as an infrastructure value, similar to if you're going to have a utility, you're going to have power, water, sewer, et cetera. And we consider transit to be part of that infrastructure. And so what we did is we looked at what, and we hired a third party to come and do this. So that's a national firm that really did this analysis that said, if you take $1 and put it into a transit stop, so for instance, let's choose Roy City. Roy City's Front Runner Station, the economic development pieces that not only will benefit your community for years to come, so there's that investment that's initially there, but it also allows your residents to have access to the broader Wasatch Front area that we cover. So we cover 1,400 square miles. And what it also has done, and this is from EDC Utah and these other entities that are really looking at businesses that are looking to relocate in the state of Utah, specifically the Wasatch Front. Again, we just studied the Wasatch Front piece. But even that is taking even a 5% of, 5% of the vehicles on the road, on I-15 specifically, taking them off, actually allows for greater freight connectivity. We all sit and wait if we're on the freeway, but we don't sit and wait as long. And that will have really tremendous value, especially as, when we look at our population estimates for the Wasatch Front in the state of Utah for 2050, adding approximately 2.8 to 3 million more residents, that's going to be a big, a big jump that we all are going to have to navigate. that's going to be a big, a big jump that we all are going to have to navigate. And so allowing us to have not as much time to wait adds value to even those who do not utilize transit. And by the way, I get plenty of pictures from people who specifically get on here in Weaver County, and they take pictures and send them to us about all the traffic that they're passing, whether it's going north or south. And I recognize that we are a work in progress. And we want to continue to develop these, um, these strategies and this connectivity. And so this is what we are trying to do in terms of looking at our communities moving forward, so. It's basically $5.11, because when they calculated what it would cost people who would then, if there was no transit, to sit in traffic longer, and then the amount of businesses that would not maybe relocate to the state of Utah, given the traffic scenario. So that's really kind of how that looks. But it's also, because it's an infrastructure, it is going to have lasting value. So the dollar spent at the time that was spent is lasting for 30, 40, 50, 60 years. So that's basically how they do it. There's a lot of calculations, and I'm happy to send you the full report if you would like to look at that. So thank you, that's a great question.
And so like what, you were talking about ridership. What are you seeing for ridership and for numbers and that sort of thing? Especially in this area, like, you know, the Roy and Weaver County area. You're talking about making expansions and.
So for context, um, we don't really look at pre-COVID anymore, but I'll just use this as a framework. We actually are exceeding our pre-COVID levels in bus as a whole, and which is one of the reasons we're expanding bus. Because we know that there's untapped potential in there for people who want to have more access. But let's say they live in a newer community that's maybe not quite there, and that's what we're trying to achieve. Our ridership on frontrunner is about 87% of the time it's occupied. It is incredibly busy. I take it occasionally, I don't take it all the time from my house. I go to the Woods Cross Station, and it is incredibly crowded, and it's standing room only. I live in Bountiful, and so if I'm just trying to go from Bountiful to Salt Lake, it doesn't sound very far, and it's not as the crow flies. But when you start to factor in all of this growth that's around these communities, then it really becomes a challenge. And so even me doing that actually is, it only takes me 10 minutes more to take transit, even though I have to go backwards. Because I, I live not close to Woods Cross. And as we, like, as I said, the more that we have construction, the more that we have, all of these other components are going to be adding up. South Davis is going to have a huge I-15 rebuild coming up. And it's going to be a huge challenge for my neck of the woods. So I share your pain, or I will share your pain. But ridership overall is phenomenal. We're probably in the top five in the country in, in return to ridership normality. And we're seeing people ride in the middle of the day. It's a huge growth area for us that we never anticipated. We were originally set up to do morning and afternoon. And now we see it all day long. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm very long-winded. I apologize.
Do you have much crime ever on UTA? Or do you have like policemen that, you know, are just assigned to ride the frontrunner?
Yes. We actually have a police force of 70, and we have inter-local agreements with all the cities that we, that we service. We oftentimes will, if especially an incident near our, um, near one of our, like if it's a bus, or if it's rail, or whatever it is, a lot of times our police officer will be there, and they'll work in conjunction with whatever city that is located it in. They are also, um, they do fair inspections. They, um, they, we don't have a lot of crime. People are well aware of our presence. And we also, we, they're, they have a uniform, they're obviously right there. And we feel like deterrence is the good way to go with that. We also have a tremendous amount of cameras invested in all of our vehicles, including our buses. So, good question. You know, we do get the occasional break-ins at our park and rides. Unfortunately, that's kind of a challenge for us still, but anything significant is pretty much not, uh, people can see it.
That's good. What percentage of the actual cost of it, uh, does the ticket cover? You know, the actual cost of someone to take a ride, you know? What is, what percentage does the ticket cover of that actual cost?
So fares and fare collection as a whole is about 9% of our budget. Is that the number you were looking for?
Yeah.
Perfect.
I was just hearing 9%.
Just wanted to double check.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Well, counsel, let me just be a testimonial here. Both Trustee Holbrook and I attend Wasatch Regional Council Meeting, but every, seems like every other month now. And, uh, and I make a habit of basically riding that train at a Roy. And it certainly is so convenient for me. I drop onto North Temple. I attend the meeting, it's 10 minutes away walking. I walk back. It's the walking back from that meeting gets interesting, because that train both ways, both Provo and to Ogden is packed. It's standing room only, literally on that train station platform. And, uh, and you see that. And I will tell you, that train is full, okay, when I come home each time. And, and it's such a convenient, to the point that the trustee is suggesting, I see a lot of traffic, okay, slowed down as I'm passing them on I-15. So even though I have to make a couple of stops along the way, I still believe I make it home quicker, okay, in large part, because of the fact that that transit is there. So I'm a great user, I'm convinced it's the way to go. And my recommendation would be is, is if you've never ridden the train, try it. If you'd like to have an adventure with your family, get on the Roy train, travel into Salt Lake, drop off the main station, pick one of the red line, blue line, or whatever lines out there, and go to dinner, or catch a movie. And then get back on that train and come home. You'll be absolutely amazed how integrated that is into that society and how you can move around Salt Lake and just about anywhere else, okay, rather easily as a result of this transit service. So it's a great service, doesn't hardly cost me, I, I get a discount, okay?
You do, yeah.
Because of age. And, uh, and it's, it's a wonderful program, and I couldn't be more pleased with this, so thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a great testimonial. I couldn't have said it better myself. I could have had you over here.
Thank you, Trustee Holbrook. Appreciate you joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we have a couple of, uh, three action items we're going to work through tonight. First one is going to be the consideration resolution 25-5. If you remember, this is the resolution we tabled in our last meeting. It's back now with some adjustments and completions. And I believe, Matt Wilson, you're going to lead us in this one.
Yes.
If you'd like to go ahead and start us.
Or at least attempt to, Mayor. As you all are aware, our building fee schedule has not been updated for almost 30 years. I think it's about 28 years since we've last updated this. These are the recommendations, and I, in the packet was provided a number of cities that was compared to, um, to determine our fees, just to ensure that, one, we're charging a fair amount, and also that it's not being subsidized by a general taxpayer, that those people who these permits are benefiting should be paying for that benefit. I know there were some concerns about a few things. I can address some of those. One, especially being the working without a permit fee, which is suggested at $1,000. The goal there is to ensure compliance. I know it was suggested to, to follow our zoning code, which is $25 a day, and it can go up from there. One thing to keep in mind is that our nuisance code does allow for $100 the first citation, 200 the second citation, and 500 for a third citation. And each day is a separate violation, similar to the zoning code as well. And also, I would not recommend listing out the, I guess, the fees or the permits for each item under mechanical, plumbing, or electrical, because there are multiple number of items, and that's all included in the building code is what those permits cover. And if we don't have each item listed, we would likely not be able to charge. And new items do get added in the building code as well. So I don't know if there's questions, concerns, I'm happy to answer, or try to answer.
Okay, counsel, comments, questions? You've had a chance to read it. This, like I say, is the second time this document's been approached to us. Any comments or questions as we move forward?
Well, I can't believe we waited 30 years to raise these rates.
Well, and I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and so I'm just glad that, that we're doing it. And I had no clue. I mean, when we added, did our garage, we didn't ask anybody. We just built it. But it hasn't fallen down yet, so I think my husband knew what he was doing. But I'm sure there's a lot of people that do add on to their house that probably don't know that they should be paying a fee, so. But I'm just glad that we're not missing out on all these thousands of dollars that we should have been maybe collecting sooner. So I'm glad that we're doing this, so.
Okay, other comments?
So I, you know, I'd already spoken with you about my concern with the $1,000, because I think Anne brings up a very good point. I think there are a lot of people that have no idea that they should be getting this. And I know we've been very gracious, and we've had discretion about where they're charging it. I did call and contact several different cities in the area. Six cities don't have a penalty. Some are double, kind of like it said, they're double fee of the permit. Some are like $250 for the first notice. They say give two to three months. And if they don't get it, then they'll go to $1,000. Some are, you know, somewhere in between there for the different cities. So I, I really liked the mayor's suggestion of doing the fee in that regard. But I still like us having, you know, some discretion, because I think a lot of this is education for people, because they have no idea. And, you know, give them that opportunity, give them that, that chance. And then, of course, if they don't, then it escalates up to something different. But that, that's my biggest concern of all of these, is that $1,000 is definitely, um, I think overwhelming in my, in my mind, so. And then as I called, Salt Lake has $1,000. There was one other city that had $750, but everyone else was definitely different when I called.
And, and if I just may address.
Yes, please do.
So I did discuss with our building official, Gail Supp, about homeowners that aren't aware, and there's oftentimes that she becomes aware of it, either because they're doing something new and they realize they need a permit. And what she will go do is go and inspect what she can. Sometimes they may cut out in the drywall specific areas and allow her to see, okay, if this area is compliant, then it, it can be presumed that the, the whole, uh, all the work was compliant as well. And so there, she hasn't issued any of those fees. We, uh, obviously aren't out just trying to get everybody. The thing is, is we want to ensure compliance because of the dangers that are associated with some of this work. Obviously, there could be a number of things that could go wrong if someone's not conducting these things up to code. The other thing is, is this is a civil fine, it's not a criminal fine. So we could, uh, generally when it gets to that point where someone is not willing to comply with the code, we're not going to be hitting them with a civil fine. We're going to be charging them and taking them to, to court, and then they'll have to meet with the judge potentially, so.
That was my question, is how enforceable is this?
And again, we, we have to look at it from an enforceability perspective. We're not looking for, again, there's probably, I will neither confirm nor deny that there's maybe three or four things on this list that I haven't done that I would be out of compliance with. But the, we, we have to make it punitive enough, especially as we go through and start to do these like larger redevelopments, where, again, the intent with, in my opinion, the intent of $1,000 per day without a permit is more like the large-scale projects. Not the where you're taking and, you know, doing a remodel in your house, or replacing a water heater, or replacing your, your.
Where does that say that?
I know, and that's the thing, is there's ambiguity as far as, yeah, as far as that's concerned.
So in your opinion, uh, does $1,000 in a document that people are going to pull on the website get your attention?
Yeah, well, yeah, it should. And that's the thing is, because I, I look at it from the perspective of, if I've ever had my roof replaced, um, and I will neither confirm nor deny that I've had my roof replaced, um, and I've used, you know, I actually used somebody that was in the Roy Connection Magazine. I don't believe they took and pulled a permit when they replaced my roof.
So who's responsible now to pay that permit? Who's ultimately responsible for that permit not being levied by the city to?
Correct.
You or the contractor?
Right, and that's where I was going to ask. Where, who, where does the, where does it fall in terms of who is? Is it the property owner, or the professional company that you taken, hired?
It, it depends, honestly.
Does it?
Yeah, because, uh, some of these contracts, they will enter into, will say that they are responsible for it, and if they fail to do that.
Right.
Then that's on them.
Right.
Uh, old, I mean, as the homeowner, you are responsible. But at the same time, like I said, we're, one, say you replaced your roof three years ago, or even a year ago, for easy math for me. You're not going to be hit with a $365,000 fine. I mean, that would be, uh, in my opinion, a constitution.
The fine is working. Like, that is what the fine is for, is when you're working on the project.
Correct, right.
So it's not an out of compliance fee or anything. And, you know, if the $1,000 is problematic, change it. That's what you guys were elected to do.
Yeah, but doesn't, with that, let me ask a question, because it sounds like it's a civil penalty. And it isn't until it goes into a judge that it becomes punitive. And, and my mind's eye is, and say, and correct me if I'm wrong, $1,000 equates, at least in value, equates to a Class B misdemeanor. That's the ceiling for a Class B misdemeanor. And, and we know what a Class B misdemeanor is in terms of what, what gets you to that point where a judge makes a decision. So if this is really more of a civil penalty, then I would say is, is that then the Roy Municipal Code 1027, which talks about enforcement, civil penalties, is the place this ought to be found, whatever that number should be. Not necessarily on the document that's going to be posted out there that basically says, oh, by the way, if you don't do this, you're going to get fined $1,000. No other fee in Roy City, and we have lots of fee schedules, puts that kind of number out there. And even the Salt Lake one that you looked at, and I looked at as well, we're talking about people pouring or mishandling how water gets into the water, those stormwater drains. Make it clear, counsel, there was a time when Roy City used to put those big orange dumpsters on people's streets. Do you know why we do not do that today? Because if they put a battery, or they put some chemical, and it drains out of that retention, rain gets in there and washes it out, and it goes down that stormwater drain, it's thousands of dollars a day Roy City's going to be penalized. So when you look at that one in Salt Lake City, it's in this document, this is where people are not taking the controls to ensure that wastewater is not permeating, okay, inside of these wastewater strings which violate EPA standards. So that's the reason why we see them. But I could not find in any of these where, in fact, people, any city went up there and said, oh, by the way, you're going to have a $1,000 fine, okay, as a result of not doing that, at least not in their schedule. Now, in their policy, it probably does say that.
It escalates, it's, it's an escalating.
And it can be, but that's not what this document says. This document says it's $1,000. I keep wondering who's going to make that decision? You? Uh, Gail? Who's, who's making that final decision? I'd hate to see that. And here's even the harder one. The harder conversation would be is, middle of winter. Middle of winter, Friday afternoon, my furnace goes out. Who am I going to call? Roy City? And say, my heavens, I've got to get a permit, I got to get a permit over here so I can keep my house out before my pipes freeze. The fact of the matter is, I'm not calling Roy City, because Roy City is not in the building to issue me a permit. I'm going to call a repair who's going to come into my, into my house, is going to fix my furnace, and then I'm going to work to get that permit, assuming, I assume, that the contractor will have that, make that permit. But I have absolutely guarantee you that's not happening. So here's my comment to you. This is, this is an interesting challenge. But all I'm saying is, there are circumstances in terms of what we're saying is, if the permit is needed, and it certainly is. Why? Because what we're doing with these permits is we're ensuring that the work is safe and that the person does not have to worry about basically his house burning down or his business burning down, because somebody did some things they shouldn't have done. It's that guarantee. I see this as a value service. And then like you said, Anne, if it means we're basically carrying on and updating from 1997 to 2026 or 2025, man, we should have done this years ago. We should have. But the key would be is, I don't contest anything about the, the fees. But the key would be is I don't contest anything about the, the fees. I think what I've read in here and I've done the comparison, they're pretty good. What I am concerned about would be is, is that I'm seeing what appears to be a thousand dollar penalty, and that's a per day penalty if you screw up. You got my attention. But I'm saying if you don't like the fee, if you, if you're basically saying as I, I says it needs to be increased, a thousand maybe doesn't work, then I say put the penalty where it should be in municipal code 10 dash 27. That's on your chart. It shows clearly that that is a civil penalty and you control that, not the judge. Not the judge. And if the city then does an execution of the requirement, simply says, okay, we're going to find you because you didn't do the permit, you didn't get what you're supposed to, then use the municipal code. And if, and bottom line is, if 25 dollars a day penalty is not enough, change it. What is a good number? I, that's how it should work. But let's get it out of the fee, the schedule fees. I've never seen it. I looked at all of those, even the one in Pleasant View. And it alludes to Pleasant View, it says, and it's in your document, counsel, so you can certainly verify this. They provided the documents to you. It says in the Pleasant View one, it is doubling the building fee. If you don't have a permit, you're going to double the building fee.
Anne, I verified that. That's-
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm saying is, is that, but even with that, it just simply references it, but it's tied to a building fee. I'm saying to you is, and by the way, most of what I read, those doesn't even have them in there. And you validated, probably went on to other cities. That's, that may, they'll catch up someday. But at least in terms of the fee, I think a thousand dollars is way over the top. And my recommendation to you would be two things on this, okay? If you basically believe, believe it's an infraction, and if you want to look at it from a judge perspective, and it's not something someone's going to go to jail for, then I would say even the top of the list on infraction is 750 dollars, not a thousand. I gave that to you in the data. Then change it to 750. But I don't think it's that. That's a judge decision. That's not a city council decision. Your portion is the municipal code 1027. And I'm saying to you would be is, if you don't like 25 dollars a day, if you don't like 50 dollars a day for the second and further violation, then change that number to what you think is the right number and let it rest in the ordinance, not in the schedule fees. Because it certainly is not there for the chiefs. It's certainly not there for police. It's not in the fire. It's certainly not in the public works, and it's certainly not inside of Parks and Recs, which all of you have fee schedules. It's only found in this proposed document, nowhere else. And I'm suggesting is, is that I don't think it should be there.
Well, I had no clue. Can I tell you how many hot water heaters I put in my house? I, I didn't know we had to get a fee. I had my roof done. Um, I mean, it was by a licensed contractor who'd been in business for years. But I've done a lot of things on my house that I guarantee half the people in my family who've had done, things done to their house probably didn't even know they had to have a permit to do. I think that they're thinking a permit if they're adding an addition to their house or-
And go.
Doing a major thing. But just to do something, you know, like this, I had no idea.
Anne, I'm going to tell you something. You can pull the record because I just did. In 2016, as a city council member, I think I was, somewhere around there, had this same issue come up. And interesting enough, the biggest complaint, Anne, back then, it's the same complaint today is people just don't know. They don't know. Okay? This says, it alludes to it. It basically says, if you change out your roof, you need to get a permit. But the ordinance basically says, and you can read it, the ordinance says is, if I want to put a new, another roof on my roof, I'm allowed to put two roofs on.
Yeah.
There's nothing in this that suggests I have a permit to stick some more shingles on top of my roof. I would think you probably would want to have a permit for that, but it's not in here. It specifically ties, and it's in this document, if you're going to re-roof, tear the old one off and put a new one on. And then you best have somebody that knows what the crap they're doing, okay, to check that. And surprisingly, on the ones that I have been involved in, in my neighborhood, and I've had a ton of them in my neighborhood, they're actually giving kudos to our building inspector because that young lady knows what the crap she's talking about. And she basically says, they did a good job. What bothers me, Anne, to be honest with you, I probably have seen 10 or 15 house roofs replaced in my neighborhood alone over the last year and a half to two years. My fear is there probably is only a handful that come in and got a permit. And you know why?
Because they probably didn't know they needed to have a permit.
So how do we get them to know? Because that's the big issue here.
Because then you can't fine someone a huge fine if they didn't know. I mean-
Oh, well, we could probably argue that one. Negligence is not a reason. I'm just saying to you, Anne, how do we educate? Because I'm telling you, people don't know. You said, your words, I'm just asking, some of your friends, somebody knows what they're doing, some of you hired may have come in and put a water heater in your house.
Yeah, he's a licensed plumber that's done it for me.
Did you get a permit?
No.
Bingo. And I'll guarantee you, probably 80% of the people that put a water heater in their house had somebody come in and they didn't have a permit. Why?
Who decides which services need to have permits? Is it a state thing or is it state-
It's actually a national.
Oh, national?
And that's what the, the building codes that we adopt are done by the, by the ICC, the, whatever that stands for.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm saying to you is, is it, is it, and I'm just going to be blunt, okay, because I usually am, okay? This document that's, you have a copy of, and I'll just point it out to you so there's no confusion, that document right there is not found on the city website. You walk into the office, they'll show you that. That's a good document. It tells you what needs to permit and not need to permit. Okay? If the person were to simply make a call or walk into the office, they can basically see that and says, wait a minute, there's a water heater on there. There's a furnace on there. There's a gas line on there. There's a water line. There's a water heater. And everyone has been called out in there, including that, that stove. Some people like put those pellet stoves in their houses, okay, or in their basements. You've got to have a permit. There it is. But I dare to have you find that anywhere on the website when they go looking.
So I have a question in regards to the fees. When you talk about 25 dollars per day for the first violation and 50, does that mean you give them a chance? Like, okay, you have 25 dollars and now you've got, um, you know, a week or two to try to get this figured out? Or is this accumulating like a library fine?
Or can they do it like, I'm going to use the legal term a fix-it ticket?
Okay, so I appreciate that question because I think sometimes we talk about these fines. Excuse me. And it's like, oh, it's this much, you know, what's going to happen when some rogue person goes and finds everybody? That's certainly a risk, but I think that's a risk with any law. So the reality is, is Roy City is very detrimental to all code violations and zoning ordinance violations and all those things. To be quite honest, we usually go months before we talk about citations or court. To be honest, to go and cite the persons that we're talking about who replaced their water heater without a permit. I mean, and again, part of the permit, the reason you want it, and everyone should want it, is so that it's inspected and done correctly. Right? Like if you don't pull a permit and you have a fire and you don't have an inspection, you're going to be in a lot of trouble with your home insurance. So we're not doing this to be mean. But speaking frankly, for me to go out and proactively search this and go find people, I would probably need about five additional persons in my department to go do that. That's not the intent here.
Yeah.
And again, I would just say with the fine amount, I think somehow there's like this, these glances that we're advocating for this. That's what we picked. It may or may not be right. You guys can set any amount that you want.
How about this? And I'll propose something. What, what if we said 50 dollars per day, up to 10 days and/or 500 dollars, any day beyond 10 days, the fee will double to a maximum of a thousand? That.
So what does that mean when you say per day? Does that mean as many, every, like if today you started your project-
Yep.
But you didn't find out about it for seven days or 10 days, then you'd just be every single day accumulating that? I mean, some cities say they, they, they charge you a fee, they give you a couple of months, two or three months to get it, then it goes up. So, I mean, is that how it's accumulated? Like when you say per day? I mean, if you're on day seven and you've been working on it or-
The way I read this is it's working days, right?
Correct.
So if you're working without a permit, we show up, you say, hey, you got to get a permit or stop.
Okay, so as long as they stop-
This would happen-
Okay.
On, so that happens on day seven. On day eight, you say, well, Brody's ugly. I don't care what he says. I keep working. Then you start occurring a fine.
Okay. So if they stop, halt, halt the job, then they stop the accumulation of the fee. Okay.
And where is that written?
Well, that's what we're trying to write. That's what I'm saying.
It says working, right?
Right.
Working day.
Let me see here. Let me please find that myself.
Yeah.
Where does it say working days?
And again, it would be, yeah, this is, it's a, go ahead.
It says working without a permit.
Working without a permit?
Working without a permit.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
It's not that you have your water heater and you get fined every day for having it.
Right.
It's that-
It's the working.
You're working on the project without a permit.
So my water heater I'm talking about. So my water heater, I had, you know, a friend who's a plumber come to put my water heater in, or if I have him come and fix my furnace. So obviously, we have one inspector that comes and they know everything about furnaces. They know everything about water heaters. So I wouldn't ask somebody who didn't know what they were doing in the first place.
Oh, sure.
But so they just come and they know, I, obviously what they're doing to double check.
So our, our inspector knows the building codes. I'm not saying they could fix your water heater, but they know whether or not it's installed per the building code. And that's what they're inspecting.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not, they're not trying to fix it.
Yeah, because I would have got a permit if it was only 32 dollars. I just didn't know. But you had to have one to get a new water heater. So.
But you didn't know.
I didn't know.
And remember, the, the piece of this conversation that's really important would be is, is that we're trying to say to the public, I certainly have already done that in my mayor's message. I'm asking you to do the same thing. We carry the message, that before you choose to go cut the curb, before you basically put that sheet rock down, before you do this or that, please go to the city's website and look and see what's required as a permit or not.
Well, then we have to have this on there then.
But that's not on there.
I know, but it needs to be put on there.
Well, and that was the intent of that piece on the top would be is, it says, as that permit says, if you're going to look at your furnace, get a permit. If you're going to play with your air conditioner, get a permit.
Right.
If you're going to basically put a stove in, and many have done that, get a permit. If you're going to mess with the water lines, or you're going to play with the electrical panel, all those permits are on that list. And it tells them, if you put it in this code, this is the document that will be pushed out to everybody who wants to see it and looking for it, will say, before you basically put a water heater in, check with Roy City website. The fee schedule will tell you if it needs a permit. And if I see it on there, then the expectation would be is that you get the permit. If I don't see it on there, then it's okay for me to change that fan in my bedroom.
Right.
I can do that without a permit. But I tell you, if you leave it generally as electrical, electrical, to take that circulating fan in my bedroom and put a new one in there, because I just got that at Home Depot, I don't know at this moment whether I have to have a permit or not. Because it's not clarifying that. But I do know this, based on what I've read so far, you play with that electrical panel in any fashion or form, you need a permit. You better get a licensed person in there to make sure they know what the crap they're doing, or you'll burn your house down.
Right.
But I will not necessarily burn my house down, okay? If I have somebody put a fan in, or if I do the fan. But if the code says to have that checked, then it should be a permit on this list and we should do it by the numbers.
Right.
But it's that ignorance that we're perpetuating by not clarifying what you want a permit on. Now, I have told people, if in doubt, call the city. You know what? I can say that until I go blue in the face. And the fact of the matter is, people will not listen to me. They will not listen to me. But if I tell them, go to the city's website, look at the fee schedule. If you're going to put a basic oven or a stove in there, and this one says a gas stove, wood stove, or a pellet stove, you need a permit, then there's absolutely no reason why they can't see that and make the appropriate arrangements to do that.
Is this something that can be purchased online? Like if it is on the weekend? Like if, you know, we have a problem?
So there is an emergency work, basically, if they need emergency work, your furnace goes out and it's over the weekend. We're not saying you have to wait until Monday to do that. You have authority to go do that. And then we, we would be basically prohibited from, uh, base issuing any sort of fine as well. And also, just along with what the mayor's saying, um, so on the fee schedule, I would not recommend detailing out what each item is, but you could do that on the city's website and say, hey, these are some examples of what each of these are. And then the fee schedule is anything that falls within this area is this much. But then you still have those details on the website. And it also doesn't prohibit anyone from calling the city and asking those questions.
And that would be because the ICC is updated every six months. And so for us to keep that going every six months would be difficult to update.
Yes. And if we don't have, like I said, if we don't have it listed and we say, these are the things that we're charging a permit for, then we will not be able to charge that, that fee for those items. And that's, I mean, if that's the council's prerogative, then that's it. That's all within your purview and able to do that if that's how you want to do it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I do think this is a pretty cool little form. I was kind of excited when I saw it.
I was too when I found it.
But, um, but you're saying the concern, or maybe you could say, for example, this is not totally inclusive? Could you do something like that? Because it is such a cool paper.
Well, the concern I got, Diana, was a concern. In this proposed ordinance, there are two attachments. The attachments go with the ordinance. I'm not comfortable that the exhibits go with the ordinance.
They do not.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just informational.
Just good information for you to assess. So if, if you're saying is, is it, is it maybe it needs to go, then we can do that. You know, you could basically says, there's still so many questions here. We need to table this again. And we can basically come back and take another look. But, but there are two issues here that I just want to make sure we're clear. I don't think at this moment, counsel, you have any issues. The fact is the fees need to become more representative of what's happening in 2025 that didn't happen in 1997 when those things are in there.
That's correct.
And if you're saying is, yeah, I think the fees are right. They just need, it's just clarifying exactly what should be and what should not be in terms of clarification of what needs to permit. And then the issue about the thousand dollars. Those are the two issues I think on the table. If we're not prepared to basically come up with a recommendation, then I would suggest table this. Let's throw some recommendations at you to consider and pick A, B, C, or D in our next meeting.
I believe that this recommendation is quite consistent with several of the cities I contacted. So if you take a look at it, um, you know, subject to, oh, I had a question. When it says right here, working without a permit per day violation, subject to double fees, what's the difference of that versus the number of the fine?
So like the double fees?
Yeah, where it says, working without a permit per day violation, subject to double fees. So what's the difference between subject to double fees here and then the fine that's right here?
So the subject to double fees, I think it should say subject to double of the, the permit fee.
Uh, and so what does that mean? That would be in addition to the thousand dollars?
Or.
Or, that would be or? So you could, you could do that same thing. Or if we do the 25 or 50, that's pretty close to being double, right? Because that would be the fee plus the 50 dollars would be like us-
Yeah.
Would be like that second building fee. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if you did the, the 50 dollars or, or the 25 per day, but you know, 50 dollars per day?
So it depends on the, the permit though.
Sure.
Because if it's the building permit, it's a lot more than 50 dollars. That was-
So then if you just did double fees, then that would be more indicative of, uh, throughout the, that would be a little more representative.
Yeah.
And, and I do know several cities have that where they have double fees. How do you feel about that as an option? That way it'd be a little more consistent throughout that.
We have no opinion.
That's an interesting comment.
That's up to you.
Okay, counsel, what would you like to do?
So is, just out of curiosity, is your concern just the punitive aspect of like the per day fee? Is that where you're, I know that's where you're at. And I'm asking like Diane, because again, there should still, in my opinion, be a- Because again, there should still, in my opinion, be a per day. And are you saying, in lieu of a per day, we do a doubling of whatever the fee is as the penalizing aspect of not getting the permit?
Well, I think that's one way to make the difference between, this is a super huge project and these people should have known about it. And fifty dollars for them may not be really indicative.
Correct.
So if you double that fee,
Right.
then it would be more representative of the magnitude, whereas other people that are doing small
Smaller.
Small projects.
Right.
Then I think it's more representative. So how do we come up with a way to represent across?
Right.
Is, is, that's just one example, or that's one idea as we're discussing this. I, you know, I think that it's nice for people to be aware of that, because I do think it gets your attention and that's important. But I do really like how we have discretion for that as well, because we're trying to work with people. People are trying to live and learn. We're trying to educate them. So I don't believe that a thousand dollars is an appropriate number.
Right.
I'm just trying to come up with a number that would be appropriate and still be something that would go across the the whole realm of these different types of fees, you know? And so like you said, something up, you know, up to a maximum, maybe you do fifty dollars a day up to a maximum, or or subject to double fees, you know? These are some discussion items.
But again, you're thinking thousand of like, so let me, let me, let me hang on. Let me think it. Hang on. Let me, I'm trying to word it. So I'm trying to think of the, there's, there's a term that I can't think of in contract terms, but it's a
Eighty-five number, cut it in half.
No, 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 no.
And you'd still be.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. No, that's right. I meant five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollars is where I'm saying we get at. Whichever is.
Maximum.
Correct. So again, I'm saying the, if we're looking at from a doubling of the fee, you're going to have large-scale projects that are operating without a, you know, a permit is going to exceed the five hundred.
Right.
And in those ones, in those ones, I'm fine with that, because they should know better and they should be operating with.
There's a lot of people out there, do-it-yourselfers, because they can't afford to hire a contractor and.
Again, yeah, I'm not thinking residential. I'm thinking more of like, are, anything that we might start getting in terms of like redevelopment.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm talking, even, because even on like a, in addition to a home, it goes based upon square footage. And even then, if you look down the fee schedule for whatever it was, the ICCE thingy, it only gets to a certain threshold. And again, even if you took and doubled that, and in a lot of cases, I don't think, unless you're adding a five thousand square foot house off the back, it's not going to exceed the five hundred.
Well, I think that, when you take a look at this comparison, so if you do have an add-on, I mean, that could still be a pretty expensive
Right.
building fee, so, you know, and people, we are, we are trying to educate people. So, you know, maybe we could do up to a max, you know, fifty dollars a time. But it's, it's a working day, not a, you know, once you've been notified, then it's, and then it would be up to the five hundred. If you stop and you get your permit, great. And if you just keep working on it day after day, then it would go up to that maximum of five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I can see that as a way to
Right.
To talk about it.
Okay, council, what do you want to do? You want to fix this tonight, or you want to basically table it and come back, come back with two or three options and pick? How do you want to approach this?
Well, I think that Randy actually said it pretty good. Fifty dollars per working day to a max of five hundred dollars. Does that sound?
And that would be found where?
Like where, would, would we be saying that, would we be, would?
Did you put it in?
Then that would still, don't you think it should, I think we, people still need to know about it. They still need to know about the fee. So mayor, what you're thinking is, we shouldn't even have a penalty fee in this and this code at all? Is what you're thinking?
No, I think, here's what I'm saying, is that, is that this is where it gets really interesting. It's hard for me to understand, because it's hard unless you look at it from a lawyer's perspective. They don't see things that are issued from this bench in a court, where it's a misdemeanor or it's an infraction, okay, taking place, versus where it's in fact a civil penalty. And the people will still see that as a penalty, regardless of whether it comes from a judge or comes from the city, it's a total penalty. There's a provision within the municipal code today, ten dash twenty-seven. You can pull it up, you can read it. I've shown you what it says. Where the city council chooses what that will be. Irregardless of what the judge chooses to do, and some issues we've already seen, will go to a judge. And the judge will determine whether that is in fact going to be a misdemeanor or not. And we don't control what that judge decides. We don't, we don't control. But what we do control is what you state in municipal code ten dash twenty-seven. Now, here's the beauty of this. We've heard over and over tonight, there is human discretion involved. Code enforcement officer sees a violation, walks up to the individual who did not know, says cease and desist. And more than likely, your fix-it ticket, okay, will in fact direct then, that individual to stop, get the permit, do it right, and move forward. That probably happens more often than not, and that's the human factor. But at the end of the day, you're going to have someone that simply says, go pound dirt.
Or come into court and go into the process.
And then if you have to go through the court process, that's a whole different discussion. Because you can penalize, we do see penalties that do not make it to the judge. But sometimes they have to go to the judge. So what I'm saying to you would be is, if we're really talking about civil penalties and you have a provision within the code today that is in fact says, this is set apart for civil penalties in the zoning ordinance, that's code ten dash twenty-seven, then I'm saying, that's where you put it. Now, whatever that is, that's where you put it. And if you want to reference then in the fee schedule, subject to penalties, I think your point would be is, first offense, read ten dash twenty-seven, up to maximum fifty, five hundred dollars, okay, whatever, then put that in there. I mean, I can't say that's good or bad. I didn't see any of that in every one of the documents that were sent to us. But I mean, it kind of makes sense. Maybe we're the ones that people start plagiarizing, okay? But we go up there and we just simply says the requirement. The question is, what do you do if you do not do something with the code in ten dash twenty-seven? Because that's where it is. That's where it's supposed to be. That's what you can control. Now, if you want to put it in here and then also make reference to that in the fee schedule, for whatever reason, you certainly have the authority to do that. But I'm just saying is, make sure it matches, or you're going to have this penalty in the zoning ordinance today that serves no purpose.
Right.
Because it doesn't match anything you decide tonight. So whatever you do, just be consistent. Now, I, I'll be blunt with you. I like the discretion. I think that's important. But at the end of the day, ordinances are laws. And darn it, the laws need to be followed. And if they're not being followed, why in the crap you have the law in the first place?
So mayor?
Please.
You're talking a little bit in circles for me, but, so what I am wondering is, do you feel good about this recommendation in this, in this blue piece that has been recommended? So are you saying you feel good about your recommendation there, or you think it shouldn't be there?
My opinion would be is, is that if I was going to basically have a decision in this, my vote, unless one of you walk out of here, my vote would have been, what is currently in the ordinance is what you reference in the fee schedule. And if you want to change that number, change the ordinance. And if you don't like twenty-five dollars a day and fifty dollars per second day, then change it to what you do feel comfortable with. But make your reference in the fee schedule. If you're going to show a penalty, make it reference to what's in the ordinance today, or what you want it to be in the ordinance tomorrow. Don't make this two separate issues. They're not. It's a zoning ordinance compliance.
To clarify then, you do not believe in this blue schedule that 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 recommendation should be written here, but that whole line should be removed?
No, I think you ought to put that whole thing right there. If you want to basically quote, quote, miss code ten dash twenty-seven, put it there. But get rid of that thousand. And basically put what the code says, or change the code to what you want. So if basically Randy says, I think it should be fifty dollars a day, regardless of what it is, up to a max and a five hundred dollar penalty, this is a civil penalty, then I would say to him, put it in there. Change the numbers. And then that's what's going to be in municipal code ten dash twenty-seven.
All right. I think I've got it. I think I've got it. Okay. So here's, and I'll balance this off everybody. So what I would propose is we change ten dash twenty-seven to double of the inspection fee. Or is ten twenty-seven out of scope was going to be my next question?
Well, currently, it's not listed as that, and one, so that's the zoning code. We have not, one, if you're going to change that, it's got to go to Planning Commission and then come here. So that's, that's not noticed for us to address tonight.
Okay.
Because it has to go through the zoning planning commission. It's a zoning change.
But if you do want to adopt that, you could just include in the language there, subject to the penalties listed in ten dash twenty-seven. If you don't list anything and you don't want any fees for working without a permit, you can do that. But if you don't put that in there and you do want that, it wouldn't apply, because the zoning code is separate from the building code.
You know, mayor, I think you've talked me into it. I think we should table this, because we are talking about a few different areas that don't maybe include what we had
Yeah, the scope has changed.
anticipated. We, yeah, we've added it.
So your, your scope hasn't changed, unless you're trying to change the zoning code. So you can have the, have the zoning code apply to this. But if you're trying to change the zoning code, then you would have to go through that process first.
Planning Commission. That's right.
So Brian, what do you think we should do? You've been quiet. What's your recommendation?
Well, the thousand is excessive. I mean, and I, I kind of like the direction Randy's going. But I think we would be better spent, as a council, actually to table it, come back with, like the mayor said, an A, B, and C, and vote on it versus try to put our collective minds around a number. That's my opinion, but definitely a thousand. That's, that'd be a lot to hit a homeowner with.
Well, and we've waited since nineteen ninety-seven, so it's a couple more weeks.
Okay. Then, then with that statement, recognizing we're hearing people talk about that, then do I have a motion then to table resolution twenty-five dash five, a resolution amending fees for building inspections, plan reviews, and other construction code fees? Do I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, hold that. You're getting away at me. Okay, Diane, I always like to make sure I have this written down, okay? And Brian, I have a motion and a second. All in favor to table resolution twenty-five dash five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Okay, four, one. Okay. Okay, the resolution is tabled. We'll bring this back up with some recommendations for you to consider. And please, if you would, formulate in your minds what you would like to see the language to be. And then get that into, I think Matt Wilson and Brody have the lead on this. Send those recommendations to them and we'll formulate a couple of ideas and bring those back to you. We okay with that? Perfect.
Mayor, if I can jump in before we do it. And I don't take this nicely, but like, I need to know what A, what you want out of A, B, and C. Because a thousand dollars is excessive and got everyone very excited. I don't know what A, B, and C should be in your eyes. So if you don't tell us or give us your options, we're just shooting in the dark.
Yep.
So let us know your thoughts.
All right, we'll let you know. Okay.
I'll send you mine. Diane, you have some ideas, and you have some ideas. Randy, Brian? Send the ideas. Let's see if we can formulate three or four options. Okay. Thank you, council. Okay, sorry, do this to you, Will. Matt Wilson, we're going to do this again. Consideration resolution twenty-five dash seven, a resolution amending fees for the public works fee schedule. Matt, you'd like to lead out on this one?
We're going to have Brock lead this.
Say again? Oh, okay, Brock, please.
Thank you, mayor and council. Don't mind my voice, this wonderful air that we have going on. Really messing with my sciences, but, so if my voice cuts out. So I'm up here to propose changes to our fee schedule also, which I don't know if it's ever been changed. Because obviously, right now, we don't charge a permit fee. We went around and looked around, just like these guys did, to, you know, there was five or six-plus cities that we went around and checked all the fee schedules that they charge, and everybody around us charges a permit fee. And about the going rate was a hundred dollars. That's about where we are is for a permit. And you got to think with these permits, it's, it's not usually the citizens themselves that are the ones getting this permit. It's the construction companies, the boring companies, you know, the big blooming projects, all that kind of stuff, too. So this is, this is just to help cover our cost of sending people out to make sure they're doing the job right. And, I mean, just to hit on that one right there, our water department superintendent's down on Midland right now. Because SCI bored through one of the sewer laterals.
Oh, wow.
That was about two months ago, so it's just those kind of things that, you know, they aren't necessarily our problem, but they are our problem. So, so to keep going with that, we've always charged the cut fee, which was sixty dollars. And that's just your old cut fee for somebody coming in and cutting out a section of our asphalt. We're looking to change that to seventy-five dollars, which is just kind of going with the going rate of cities around us. The patch fee that we charge right now is a dollar seventy-five a square foot, which doesn't even cover the cost of the asphalt now. So I mean, we, we raised that to three dollars a square foot. And then the winter time, it's double, because of the cost of the cold mix that we put in there is double to triple what regular hot mix asphalt costs. But then, most of the time, when we put that cold mix asphalt in, we actually have to go back in, pull it back out and put hot mix back in when it's available, just because it's a lot better product and hold up better. The core holes, that's another, like, boring company project right there. I mean, they're, they're coming out and they're cutting these six to eight inch holes in the asphalt. And they're pulling all, everything out, so they can locate utilities underneath to make sure they don't hit them, which sometimes it happens anyways, but as far as those go, those become a nuisance for us as well. So just the going rate for those, you know, for the cities around us is fifty dollars a core hole. The other thing to go with the core holes are the, it's the flowable fill, which is kind of like a, it's a soft concrete, I guess you can call it. But when they fill that hole back in, instead of using the actual dirt, because it'll settle, they put in this flowable fill, so it'll hold that chunk of asphalt back in there and not sink to where we have to, you know, maintain it.
So do they put the flowable fill in, or is that something we have to do?
No, that would be something the contractor would do.
But they do?
Yeah. So back on that, like, right now, the two thousand dollar deposit and bond that is on here, that's pretty much just to cover us for any damage that they do to, whether it's our property, whether it's citizens' property. Because we get numerous calls all the time where they pull their boring ribs out, you know, up on the concrete, up on the curb, gutter, sidewalk, whatever, and they break it. Sometimes it's a hassle to get them back out here to change it. So we have to, you know, send our inspector after those guys to come back and fix the problem. But, I mean, most of the time, they do come out, you know, they'll fix it for us. But that two thousand dollar bond or deposit kind of, you know, holds their feet to the fire, so we can get that fixed.
So I have a question. When they put the cold fill in and then it has to be removed, is that something that they pay for, both of those? Or is that something that they do, or is that something we do and then we bill them for that? How does that work?
So, most of the time, we leave it up to the contractor to be able to do that. But most of them opt. But most of them opt for us just to come in and do it for them. So then we will, you know, put it in and then take it back out because it does sink, it settles.
And then you charge them both because you have to have the cold fill first and then we charge them when we have to take it out and put the new in?
So right now we don't, but with that six dollar per square foot charge, that's to cover.
I see, okay.
Okay, other questions? I'm sorry, Brock, you have anything else you wanna share?
The other things, I mean, there's some little things, just the expiration date on the permit. I mean, this is all straightforward stuff, but most of these people that are coming out to do these projects have it done within a day or two. So I mean, having our, our permit being there for sixty days kinda just extends it out too far and everything gets jumbled up. And I mean, other than that, that's, I think everything else is pretty straightforward, so.
Okay.
I mean, if you have any.
So this is basically just contractors, not like residents?
Yeah, most of the time you're not gonna have residents.
People work on our roads and.
Yeah.
And what about the large projects like the Lumen project? Is the hundred dollar permit fee for the entire project or is that for every fifteen days or for is that?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yep, you understood what I was asking.
So we've kinda went back and forth a couple of different ways with that. We'd actually like to see it to where they, they pay every time they move that boring rig. So they come in and they, they usually do a large section, you know, to do their permits. They'll map it out of we're gonna be in this area. But it would, it would be nice to be able to have them do a new permit for each time they, they move down the block, you know, so I mean.
Okay.
So is that written in the new language?
It can be.
Okay, any other questions from Brock? Okay, let me just make a comment then. Right at the bottom, you say the fine for not obtaining a permit is a hundred dollars plus permit fee. Okay. I don't have a problem with a hundred dollars. I just have a problem with a thousand.
Well, yeah, what do you guys say, what do you feel about a thousand on that? Talking Lumen.
I'm not, well, I'm just saying is that, is that, I don't have a problem with a hundred. And by the way, a hundred may be appropriate considering about everything is required is right around fifty to a hundred dollars anyway. So really what you're saying is, is that if you don't get a per, permit and you should've got a permit, then you're gonna pay for that permit twice.
No.
If a project lasts longer than fifteen days? If the project lasts longer than fifteen days, does that mean they need a new permit for every fifteen days?
So we wanna do a permit extension. It's on there also for fifty dollars.
Sixty to thirty days.
Permit extension.
Oh, there was an amendment on one of them, on that. There was a couple of spots on here that were wrong at first and it's actually fifteen days.
And, and so if they, if it's longer than that, then they would ask for an extension? Do they pay additional for that or they just say it's gonna be a little longer than we thought?
So that would be the permit extension, which would be the fifty dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I see up there now.
Like I said, it's.
Okay, mhm.
Most of the time, any of the contractors are coming in to do this stuff, they're in and out quick, so.
But maybe because of weather, they had to extend it or something, so. And that's out of their hands, so. So if it, the weather's bad, so do you say, sorry, you're okay? Cause they don't, can't control the weather.
I hope they'd be able to finish, you know, a day's project somewhere in that scope of fifteen days, but.
So if you feel that it should include every time they move the boring rig, how many projects would that possibly impact?
I, to tell you the truth, I don't know, that's a tough one. Because it seems like, I would think just off the top of my head, they move probably, I don't know, probably every seven houses, six, seven houses, somewhere like that.
So that would be like a Lumen project. Would there be other sorts of projects that that might impact besides the, um, that sort of thing that, that we've been seeing recently, the fiber?
Not good I can think of. I think the fiber is the biggest one right now.
But I've seen them cutting circle holes right in the middle of the roads as they're trying to find utilities as they're now doing some development. And so UDOT contractors doing that as we speak, so.
Is UDOT subject to that sort of fine or permit fee?
I don't know what we have set up. I don't think UDOT would be part of this.
Well, if you believe that it would be important to add that for, you know, moving, then I think that would be something that should be added. If, if you feel that is consistent with other cities and makes sense for what that allows.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd need to make a, we'd need to make a motion to qualify that and add that comment in there, Diane. So that at least what's being approved is indicative of what we just talked about. So if you, if you agree with what you see here in front of you and say, yeah, this seems to be reasonable, willing to approve that. But the conversation we just heard suggests is, is that there needs to be just a slight additive that talks about, um, where that core holes are actually going to be as they move the drill. That charge will take place, fifty dollars a hole, then that needs to be stated in this. You okay with all that?
And what is the purpose of the permit? Because if the purpose of the permit is for someone to go and inspect each of those holes, then that would make sense that we need that for every hole, right?
That's what it is. It's making sure that these contractors are putting everything back the way they found it.
Exactly.
Okay, so then that would make sense to me that that would be part of that.
And even on anything else, I mean, whether it's any of our utilities underground, if they're doing anything with that, we have to send the inspector out to make sure.
They completed the job correctly.
And you might be able to phrase that in terms of each hole will be a charge and not just a circular hole of some sort, uh, core holes. So, uh, so if they cut a hole over here, they pay fifty, they cut a hole over there, it's fifty. What I think Brock just suggested would be is wherever they drill those holes and wherever they do, your team has to inspect or somebody has to inspect to make sure that there's no damage.
Yeah, cause it'll be on the permit that they did so many core holes in this area, you know, in, on that road, whatever project they're working on.
Okay.
So the fifty dollars per core hole, what does that cover? That covers the fill or?
Well, that's, they'll actually be the ones that come back out and do that. That's just for them essentially cutting the road. I mean, ruining, you know, which I'm not gonna say ruin, but you're gonna derate it, I guess, you're gonna.
Yeah, I think, I think my concern's really gonna be is, is that in our weather, particularly winter, if you have a weak portion of that road, um, then you're probably gonna have a pothole by the time it gets done. And who's gonna fix those potholes? You are. And fifty dollars might seem okay, but bottom line is, I'll bet you it costs you no more than fifty dollars to go fill every pothole that could be and probably is created as a result of somebody drilling a hole in the middle of your road.
So the permit fee is to, for the inspection, the core hole fifty dollar fee is for the repair of that hole, is that correct?
So they're actually repairing that hole, but that is for them. It's just like essentially a road cut fee that we charge for somebody that's gonna come in and remove that asphalt.
For our future expense that might be incurred by that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You're the inspector though, right? You guys are, do you, or do you have someone that just goes around and inspects or do you guys just do your own inspections?
Matt Howard is main, the main inspector.
Oh, okay.
As far as all of our utilities and everything like that. But then with anything.
So he's just a, a paid employee that just does that, you don't pay him extra to do that?
No, he's just a paid employee.
Okay.
Then there's also the streets department that has to do anything with asphalt itself. So the foreman in the streets department's the one that goes out and make sure everything, if they're the ones doing the work, if the contractor is, that everything's back to, you know, normal.
Perfect. Comments, questions, counsel? Okay, uh, just before I ask Diane to make a motion. Are you okay with the addition that we just talked place? Because I, if not, we can certainly do this a couple of different ways. But I just, if we agree, then what I need is a, is I need just a adaptation to the, uh, to the res, resolution twenty-five dash seven that talks to this issue about. It's a fifty dollar charge for each hole that is in fact put into the ground.
But to clarify, we're also thinking of a, um, the, the, each hole gets fifty, but it's the permit we're talking about. We need a permit for each hole or we wanna permit for every time it's moved?
Oh, so they can, they can adjust the addresses. Cause most, most of the time when they're getting this permit right here and they're going to be potholing, they're gonna go straight across the road. So it'd be like if they're going, you know, diagonal across the road, they're gonna pothole for the utilities across the road. So it's, it should be in one section right there that, or one address.
But a pain to have to go get a permit for every little hole that you dug.
Yeah, so you know.
Sorry, we've conflated two different things. There's a core hole fee, which is fifty dollars per hole already in the resolution.
Yeah.
The permit fee that you're talking about, we're talking about large scale projects that are boring. And we wanna make sure that that's clear that when they move their boring machine, it's a new permit fee.
Thank you.
So.
That's a different conversation.
Correct. Yeah, so the core hole fee, as it's been, as if I have understood your conversation, needs no change. But the permit fee, to be consistent with your comments, Diane, is you would just have to add that the permit fee is based on one location of the boring drill. Or however we wanna word that and we could change it.
Okay.
How many, as I say, is there typically like a number of feet that they move the boring machine before they start the next boring?
I don't know exactly what it is.
He already told you, it's, it's anywhere from six to eight houses roughly. But that would also depend on size of lots and what they're going through, I mean.
Yeah, I was just trying to tie it back.
But again, this is only these large scale underground projects that we're talking about.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To consider resolution twenty-five dash seven, a resolution amending fees for the public works fee schedule, which also includes a permit fee. Each time the boring rig is moved.
Okay, I have a motion then for resolution twenty-five dash seven. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ann. This is a roll call vote. Brittany?
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Scadden?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Thank you, Brock. Okay, we have now, uh, consideration resolution twenty-five dash eight. Brody, I believe you're going to lead this conversation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, counsel. This one's pretty straightforward. Cole West, who's under contract currently to purchase the property, um, at forty-sixty Sand Ridge Drive, contacted me. They're basically asking for a sixty day extension of their due diligence period under the contract. Their due diligence period under the contract ends, I believe it's the end of this week. There's just been a couple of issues that they're working through. There was a boundary line in question and actually their soil test that they're required to have before they can start any real serious engineering. They got that actually Thursday or Friday of last week. So they've asked for a sixty day extension. I've talked with a few council members. I, I don't see this as anything of bad faith or anything like that. I think it's just kinda something that comes up in their development process. Staff has no, no issues with it. Uh, this would put the closing date of the property at the first week of June.
Okay, any questions for Brody?
Nope, sounds like.
Everybody okay?
To me, then they'll probably start building right after that.
Do I have a motion then for, to approve resolution twenty-five dash eight, a resolution of the Roy City Council amending a purchase and sell agreement between Roy City Corporation and the Cole West North?
Done. Done, moved.
Okay, I think I heard it over here first, so, uh, appreciate that, Randy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ann, thank you. This is a roll call vote. Brittany?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Scadden?
Aye.
Okay, resolution twenty-five dash eight is approved. Okay, uh, discussion item, we're gonna discuss House Bill sixty-five. Chief, I believe you're going to lead this conversation.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I don't know how many had time to review the document. I don't wanna read from a verbatim, but, um, just as a preface, I think it's important that you have a little bit of understanding kinda how this got brought about. That, um, the National Institute of Occupational Health and Safety recognized that firefighters have a nine percent, um, increase in getting cancer and a fourteen percent likelihood of, of dying from cancer. So, um, months ago, the state chiefs got together and was hoping to get this initiative to the House and Senate. But surprisingly, um, it was four, it was four different presumptive cancers that they were going for. And surprisingly, they actually approved fourteen. So this really is a remarkable accomplishment from the state fire chiefs to, to get this screening for the firefighters who are, are very likely to get cancer more than those of the public. So as, as the document explains, um, this went from the body of the House and Senate floor, um, passed. And as far as, uh, kinda like the mental health, what they're gonna do is provide the funding, uh, to all the different cities. So us firefighters could go ahead and start getting screened. That begins July one. And so the appropriate funds will be available for those who are eligible to get screening. This is kinda being directed, the state has given, uh, EFA, which is the Utah Fire Academy, um, start working on this. So what they've done now is they're collecting the data to see who is gonna be eligible. So we just turned in ours as of yesterday, all of the firefighters, their years of service, how long they've worked, who they work for. And so that's been now given to the state and then we're gonna wait to hear back from them, who's gonna be, well, those who are eligible are gonna start the screening after July one. So, um, I think that's, um, good kind of a beginning to it, but I'm happy to answer any questions to the document that I provided. I just grabbed some of the information that was off the bill and not in its entirety. So trying to get the important parts that I thought was important for you to hear, um, and moving forward. After the three years, uh, the city will be half, have to pick up that screening for the employees. So, um, one of the questions I think is important just to get out that there's still not, there's still more work to be done. And one of those, I talked with Clint Smith, the, the fire chief of Draper, who was part of this, this bill. The question I had for him was a work med, that is that gonna increase the premiums for cities, which they're working with them right now, speaking with them. Cause likely that would increase the premiums for cities as this initiative gets going. So they're looking to work with workers comp, um, so not workers, sorry, uh, workers comp to try to see if they're gonna be working with different, the state of Utah on the claims. Uh, as these, as cancer gets, as we get screened and those who are found to have the different cancers. So those areas, I can't answer today, we're still working on a lot of different things on the bill. But again, I think it's a, it's a huge win for our industry, uh, to get screened for cancer. So I'm happy to entertain any questions that I can ask if I don't know them. I'll tell you, don't know, try to find you the answer. I've tried to get as much involved as I can and get as much knowledge and informed as possible, so.
How many, how many of our firefighters have reached eight years and beyond that would qualify for this?
I don't have that number. I'll, I can get you that number, but it's quite a few. We have, I mean, we're relatively young, but we do have fire, definitely quite a few firefighters who will qualify for that, so.
Have we had any firefighters have cancer from on the job, um, exposure?
Well, it's unknown. I mean, we do have, I don't, you know, it's not hip or here, but we do, we, we've had one firefighter that I'm aware who had cancer. And as far as I know, is remission and doing well. But that's what's, I think that's part of the issue is some of us who are a little bit older, um, we didn't take the precautions. So I'd say, uh, quite a few years ago, there have been, uh, different policies in place that we're supposed to do. Meaning we didn't know that not washing your gear and wearing a dirty helmet would give us cancer. It was kind of a sign of, of being cool that you had a dirty helmet, you could speak to the different fires. And I have one sitting in my office that had smoke, tar on it, and it's kind of a speaking point. We didn't know that the headband collected the just different carcinogens that was giving cancer to us. We've taken measures of washing our PPE after every fire within an hour, taking a shower as soon as we get back. Those are things we just didn't do. Once the fire was done, you know, we initially attacked the fire. We would take off our gear, the SCBA mask, we would do, go in to the fire and do what's called overhaul, which it really did the, we didn't believe the atmosphere required in SCBA. Come to find out, it's one of the worst things you can do because the fire is still off gassing. And so a lot of us did that for many years, investigating fires. We found out that if you didn't wash your gear and you put them in your car, those turnouts are still off gassing, causing cancer. So there's just been a lot of focus to it and we have taken measures in-house and like all our departments have been really careful about making sure we're, we're wearing the PPE like we should. And so, and doing all the other measures of, of wiping ourselves down. Right after the fire, we take baby wipes, we wipe down our necks, our faces. Right after the fire, we take baby wipes, we wipe down our necks, our faces. Anywhere where that smoke is touched is where you're going to get cancer. So, we are taking quite a few measures on our own, but there still is a likelihood of us getting cancer, so.
Okay, council, any of the comments, questions? This is just a discussion point.
Can anyone who's less than eight years that would like to be screened, can they be screened as well, or would that be on their own dime?
Yeah, that would be on their own, yeah.
And, and we had kind of talked earlier about the tell coverage, and I guess that's something you're still looking into, like once they're retired or out of the department, is there any responsibility or liability after?
Not now, but I think that will be coming, just like the mental health. So, if you, I did get an answer. I did call Chief Willis at Ogden. She's also sits on the committee with the state chiefs. And when I reached out to her, I think this is a good scenario. So, if a firefighter does retire right now, they're not covered, but they're going to work to get that. But also, you have a scenario where we have a firefighter resign from Roy City and go to another department. And what they'll do is they'll take the years of service. For instance, if they've worked with Roy City fifteen, ten years, they decide to go to Ogden Weber Fire, they're going to take the fire department that they worked most in the years of service, and they'll be required to pay for that pre-screening. So, fair enough, but that's likely where the cancer resides. And the, the part of the bills you read in there is we have to prove, and that becomes challenging. What we do, I think for your information, every fire we go on, we have to do what's called an N for report. And that is report on every fire. We're required to give a report. So, we could go back and see the individuals who were on the fire. It's going to be hard to pinpoint, but we can say that they were exposed to a fire and what their job was at the time during that fire. So, we have that. We will be recording. That's already being done, so.
Other comments, questions, council? Okay, Chief, thank you for the information. To be honest with you, Chief, I read the law and I read your document, okay? I think you did a really nice job pulling it together. I got about eight or nine questions. What I'd like to do, Brody, if we can, can we get a kind of a small group of conversation, kind of walk through some things? Particularly is the documentation, where will it be, how will it be available, is it available to you? There's a variety of things within the law that you've talked about, certainly some other things that are exposed in the, in the law. Just have a more of a strategy conversation, what do we do next? Where does the city posture itself? I can't help but think, to be honest with you, every municipality, every county that has a fire department, either their own or they're contracted out, will be trying to find about how do they get their arms around this, and how do they embrace this, and who's in charge of it? And it'll be interesting. So, I have a variety of things I'd like to talk to you about if it's okay. So, Brody, let's just work up a strategy time over the next week or two, and let's talk, okay?
One, one thing I will be coming with is we'll put like a, like a schedule together. So, I could have done that today, provided some, you know, as it stands now, how many would be needed. But from the financial standpoint, we will put on a rotation who's going to be up for each year. So, built into the budget, we will know these are the individuals, but that's in three years, right? But those are important things to plan in and prepare for. But yeah, I'd be happy to sit down with you and, and bro, any time to talk about it.
Yeah, and, and my, my premise would be is, to be very honest with you, Chief, and I don't want to go into a lot of detail. As much as I think it, it does advance the ideas about trying to provide some element of a, of a net for anybody who's exposed to these toxic, I mean, certainly the military does it for their veterans, okay? They have institutions set up for those who are in fact casualties of war. The bottom line comes down to is that this is really moving in that same direction. The challenge is going to be is, is where's the archives of the data? What do you know and what you have access to? And I only share that with you in large part because when you start to deal with cancers, okay, those are very personal. And I can't help to think that access to the details of what's happening in an individual's life, particularly their health, is incredibly sensitive. And how is this going to play out? How is this going to be used? There's some interesting language in the, in the law that I have some questions on. So, I'd like to sit around and just talk a little bit about how do we see us getting arms around that? And then maybe that'll be the kinds of things you'll be talking about as chiefs, and certainly I would think anybody involved in this process, so.
Yeah, I think the, that's what's nice, is getting the fire academy and the state involved. I would think they'd like to see it across the board, that we reported a certain way, what's acceptable, what's not. And so, I think there'll be more to come. I just want to kind of give you the heads up on it, that the bill passed, of what it represented. But as it comes out, I'll definitely try to seek the answers and get you the, like, seek the questions and get you the answers.
We just try to find answers to see what their intent is. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, council, we have a city manager and council report. Brody?
I only have a couple of things, Mayor, council. I think today was the official day that our, our parks are open for the spring summer. So, the bathrooms are open on the, the schedule. They're going to be locked in the evenings and open in the mornings. And then, just a reminder, I know the council got an email about this, but April nineteenth, from new, from nine o'clock until noon at George Wallen Park is our spring fling. There will be vendor booths there that are ran by the children. We'll have some, I think, fire trucks and things like that there. And then I believe waste management will be there as well, because the Easter egg also, Easter egg hunt will be done at ten o'clock. April nineteenth, ten o'clock at George Wallen for the Easter egg hunt.
Okay, council, anything you'd like to share, talk about?
I wanted to just put a big thank you to Matt and maybe Brody and Brittany. But the part in our newsletter that talked about the budget education, I thought was absolutely excellent. And I've had a few people discuss how they thought that was very interesting as well, and I think how it's coming into a, I don't know, a several part series. Because especially where we're talking about budget items, for those people who, I hope you listen to the city council and go back and look if you have a email bill or look at your billing, because that newsletter was excellent. And we can access the newsletter on the website as well. But it was an excellent article, and I think it just lends to that whole education that we're trying to provide for our citizens. So, thank you very much. And the newsletter, of course, was excellent. Brittany, really appreciate your work.
So, I just wanted to say, the last council meeting, I talked about that unified basketball team. We went to the complex and they played in the wheelchairs and stuff. Well, Roy High had two teams that played at the Delta Center on Friday for a championship, and my granddaughter was one of the helpers. And we, she was over a kid who just loves basketball. He doesn't talk, really. And he loves basketball, and he loves to do buzzer beaters. So, we got down to the time going out, and we're tied, and he's looking at the clock, and he's standing there waiting for the time to go out, and he misses the shot. So, we go into overtime, and so then, anyway, it just gets down to the end again, and he's standing there, and all he does is throw up three pointers. And so, every time he'd get a rebound, he would hurry him back up to the three point line, and he is one heck of a shooter, let me tell you. And he went there and watched the clock, and as soon as the time went out, he shot, and we won the championship. And you thought we'd won the NBA championship. I'm not kidding you. Those kids and those teachers and our, the people that were there, I mean, we were all crying. It was so exciting for those kids. And, and so, it was just so exciting for Roy High to win a unified basketball championship. And I just wanted to tell you how great of an accomplishment that was for Roy High. Also, I wanted to thank Chief Gwynn and Chief Williams, because we got a big award for our, for Ben Pearson. I mean, how exciting is that? For a Roy City policeman to get that award for the whole state, and then to get that great accommodation tonight from Ogden Regional. That just goes to show what a great fire department and police department that we have. And I'm just proud that I'm a citizen of Roy, that you guys benefit us so much. And I always, and I wanted to give a shout out to Glenda Moore. She never likes anybody saying anything about her. But I'm always like, what would we do without Glenda posting everything about Roy City in every function that comes up on our website? Because I'm like, what would we do without Glenda Moore? Because I swear, nobody in the city would know what was going on. And she fills up that blessing box and is so conscientious about that and making sure people have food. And she's just one in a million in the city, and I just want to say thank you, Glenda, for all you do for Roy City, so.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I only have one thing, and then if we can talk briefly about it. You seen an email chain that came through, talk about graffiti. If you didn't see it, it's in your email. Resident asked us to see what we can do. I figured it would be appropriate to bring this to the discussion briefly. Graffiti is an issue. It has always been an issue, and there were some issues that we've experienced in the past, and I think we have some interesting things taking place now. I think what you basically need to understand is we now interface with the public on these issues like graffiti in our city, is that what can we do, what have we done, and where we think we need to go with that. So, I'm going to ask both Brody and I'm going to ask Chief Gwynn if he will basically, let's talk about where we are on, on this graffiti journey and what we have done and what we can do going forward. So, I'll start with Brody, and then I'll ask the chief to go ahead and make comments.
I'll defer to the chief. I think he's, he's more of an expert than me.
See how fast you did that, Chief?
It was a great email. I got your email. Thank you. So, I mean, here's the reality. As long as kids have access to spray paint, we're going to have a graffiti problem. That's just the reality, right? There are some concerns about what we're seeing, whether it's gang related graffiti or not. I would argue we probably have both. We have gang graffiti that can be complicated, and we have kids with spray paint that they just want to paint pictures of certain things and certain words, and they just want to post it where everybody can see it. That has been something that officers before me have been battling. That's something I have been battling my entire career. And I suspect that moving into the future, until we solve the juveniles in possession of spray paint problem, it will continue to be a problem. So, in the past, what would happen is officers would write a report of damaged property as it relates to graffiti. We would submit that report to the juvenile court, and they would have juvenile work crews actually come out as part of their community service and actually clean up the graffiti. That program was dissolved as a consequence of COVID. Another consequence is that the ratios of adults to students has dwindled, and so that program has not come back. I have reached out to the juvenile court to ask for a meeting, to sit down, so we can see what we can do to get that addressed. Typically, I, I would encourage, what happens a lot of the time is people will be on a walk, park, the trail, right? They'll see graffiti. They just assume that someone else saw it too. Someone's already reported it. Often, we find that's actually not the case. And so, we would encourage people as they see it to call us. We can make a report. If we get additional calls, we can tell them, thank you, we did receive the call. I know that Parks is pretty good about reaching out to us when they find it at the parks. So, the biggest thing is just reporting it. Let us know where it's at. We can determine whether it's on public, private property, determine who's going to be responsible for cleaning it up. We'll take the report, report. It ebbs and flows over time. I suspect as the weather gets good, we're probably going to see more. But this is, this is an ongoing and incessant problem, and I really don't know what the solution is.
Right. If we take that sort of concept one step further in regards to, you know, vandalism, busting up fences, you know, breaking windows for homes and stuff like that, is there anything that can be done in regards to reporting that, or if they're trying to protect their area? I know they've got the camera, ringtone sorts of things, but is there anything else fence wise or that citizens can do to try to help protect their property from that?
The surveillance is always a good one. And case in point, we actually, when we have suspect information, we aggressively investigate these cases. Surveillance helps a lot. Social media can help. And when someone's private property is damaged, when we do investigation, if we make an arrest in that case, then we can actually ask the court for restitution in those cases. And so, if a homeowner is willing to put up some kind of surveillance, you know, it's unfortunate that we live in a world where we actually have to do this, right? But that does assist us in conducting the investigations, and if we can find out who's responsible, then we can ask the court to provide restitution if and when we can get them arrested.
I know it's really hard to catch kids doing graffiti. They've done it to Roy High also. On big walls, they just can't resist. And the only time I think you ever can catch them is sometimes they start bragging because they're proud of what they did, and then a kid will tell on them. And that's about the only way you can usually catch them. They usually kind of know where the cameras aren't where they do it, so.
Yeah, word of mouth, word of mouth and surveillance, that's our best bet.
Other questions? Thanks, Chief. Maybe if we can, council, as we get these inquiries, we find these issues. Two important things come out of that. The chief's taken an action to see if in fact we can get the courts to help find ways to mitigate, mitigate the damage that has in fact occurred. And sometimes through these, these work sessions, the judge can basically allow that to happen. I think that's a big, that's a good move, and it certainly will help our cause. The other piece is, is that there's certainly pieces of this, as public and private. To that which is public, we have an obligation responsibly to fix, to fix the public properties that is damaged. The challenge is going to be is where it's happened on private property, we don't have a lot of control. And, and so, you know, reporting it, I think that's the message we need to care for. If you see it, report it. At least let the record show that we have, we found it, and we're taking whatever kind of action. Encourage people to be good surveillance. Sometimes these events take place and, and the kids are doing it, and people may notice that. We just need to have the return and report portion of this taken care of so we can get arms around it. So, it's going to happen. We expect that. But I'm confident that if in fact we, we can get a couple of these individuals, okay, cornered, if necessary prosecuted, the message will clearly go that Roy takes this stuff very seriously, and you best be careful if you're going to damage other people's property. But it starts by getting everybody involved, and you can certainly, in your position, help to get that message out, so.
Right.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, good report.
Don't you wish that it'd be like they had to have, be so old to buy spray paint? If I worked somewhere, I'd say, you know what you're going to do with that?
I actually had to produce my ID to buy spray paint the other day.
You did?
There you go. Yeah. And, and it's just like the tires. I mean, let's face it, you buy a brand new set of tires, you're going to get that extra dollar or two added to the cost to do what? To dispose of the old tire.
I just paid that last night, so.
Bingo. So, maybe we start putting an extra dollar or two on every spray can, and that money goes into a trust fund to basically help us fix the damage.
Well, you don't see much toilet paper in houses anymore.
Yeah, COVID fixed that, didn't it?
And it's four ninety-nine for the tire disposal. I just pulled up my.
Oh, is that what it is today? I remember it was a dollar, so that goes.
Four ninety-nine is the goal right now.
Do the same with the paint, and I think some of that will go away, or at least we'll have funds to pay for it. Anything else, council, you'd like to share? Okay, good meeting tonight. Thank you. Do I have a motion then to adjourn?
So moved.
Ann, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sophie. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.